It is six o'clock. I will call the November the ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the West County Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a forum with all members present. Tonight we have Pastor Paul Arnold from Hasbury Church provide the invitation. If you would please stand and remain standing for pledge of allegiance. Pastor Arnold.
Let us pray. Our loving heavenly Father God, as we come to you again this evening, Lord, we just come thanking you, God, for all your many blessings upon us, Lord, for everything that you do for us, for your mercy and for your grace upon us each and every day, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, that we have this place, that we can come, Lord, in this nation and in this country that we love so dear, God, that we can come here tonight, Lord, and have the freedom to do so. We look toward Friday, Lord, where we celebrate the Veterans Day, God. We just thank you for all the veterans. We thank you, Lord, for all those that have gone and have made that sacrifice. So oftentimes down through the years, Lord, to keep this country free and to make it what it is to each and every one of us. And we just thank you, Lord, for everything else that you do for us, God. We thank you for your son that you sent into this world to take our place, God, on an old rugged cross, that we might have life and have it more abundantly, Lord, and to have the freedoms that we hold so dear in Christ. And we just thank you, Lord, for everything that you do here. We pray, God, that you'd put your hand upon this meeting tonight, Lord. We pray, God, that you'd bless each one that's gathered here, Lord, give them the wisdom to make the necessary decisions, Lord. And we just pray, God, for our nation. Now, we pray that you would just touch in this recent election, God, have your will and your way upon this nation, Lord, for all of our faults and our failures, God. We still believe that it is the greatest nation up on the face of this earth, God, and we're just so thankful to be a part of it. And we just pray, God, for our leaders on a national level, Lord, a local level, wherever they may be. We pray, God, that you'd bless them, Lord, that you'd touch them, God, help them to make sound decisions. And we pray, God, for each person that's gathered here tonight, God. We pray that you'd watch over them, that you'd care for them, God. We pray for our county, for everyone that's in this county. We pray, God, for each church and each one that we have in this county, God. We pray that you'd bless each one of those. We pray, God, for our military personnel, God, our first responders, all those that are in harm's way. We pray, God, a special blessing upon each one of them, put a hedge of protection around each one. And we pray, God, that you'd be with us in all things, have your will and your way. In these things, we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is always a citizen's time. I'll call you up and you'll have three minutes, Mr. Smith will teach you time. First person we have signed up is Mr. Alan Coe. Mr. Coe?
Thank you all for the time. Thank you for your dedication to trying to make the county better, dear Lord. I know what you're dealing, you guys, with what you've dealt with, what you're facing and all, but I want to talk about taxes, personal property a little bit, and mostly the water bill. Tax, personal property, I understand. Right now is the time for the county to make money. There is a mark, that personal property tax will eventually back off. These vehicles are going to back off. But what I'm afraid of, that this water bill that I'm going to discuss is not going to back off. I've been dealing with it for twelve years now, since this first started. Went with my mother on Route eleven. I said, she was on a fixed income. She had to make choices. If it wasn't for me and my brother helping her pay her bills, she couldn't afford the water bill. But we, based on everything, we wanted to do our part and try to help. So we, she had a good will, just like I've got a good will. And now we're at the point that I'm looking at retiring down the road. I don't want to be faced with a bill just in her same shoes that she was in. Down the road, it might be thirty, forty, fifty dollars that I don't have the money to pay for. And I don't have kids to take care of me like me and my brother took care of her. So with a good will, I've been, when I came on to the three hundred and fifty feet limit, I was within five feet of the limit until they set the meter. And then I placed in all three hundred and ninety-three feet to get into the house or at the square I wanted to speak, which is that Frost Brew Spigot outside, not in the house. So I could have put it at the road, but that's in the hay field. So I run it to the house, three hundred and ninety-three feet. Didn't really complain about that, still wanted to do my part to help out. I know people in Crockett needed it. I know some of my neighbors need to go there by the way. But there seems to be, now I get a bill that we've taken away the free gallons, the free thousand, first thousand gallons. And I don't, I mean, I don't mind paying, but I don't want to pay for nothing. And now that's exactly what I'm asked to do, is pay a bill with no free gallon. I use anywhere from maybe fifty to three hundred and fifty gallons during the summer, wash my car, wash my vehicles, but I still pay that bill. So my other five hundred, six, seven hundred gallons going to somebody else. So with that, still didn't complain, but now I'm complaining because I'm paying a bill for nothing. I'm getting nothing in return other than a, as they termed it to me on the phone, a courtesy service is how it's put now, not a connection or disconnect fee. It's a courtesy service that I don't need because I've got a good will. So I'm being punished for doing that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. Next person signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
My domestic terrorism report for this reporting period is about the same as the last one I delivered to the West County Board of Supervisors meeting. Problems still exist in the early morning hours of approximately six AM on the twenty-ninth of October, while still dark, two shotgun blasts came from four twenty-four Bishop Road. And in the early morning hours of October thirtieth, another loud noise. Also, car dogs were messed with on my title. On November third, two thousand twenty-two, I left on a business trip at eight AM and returned at around twelve PM. I locked my storage building door before I left and removed the key and verified the door was locked. And when I returned at around twelve PM, the door was unlocked. The door was verified to be unlocked before inserting a key. Nothing was missing as far as I could tell. However, this presents a good opportunity for the police to determine who unlocked the door using geographic graphics, since they have a location and timeframe the incident occurred. Also, on November third, two thousand twenty-two, a shotgun noise was heard at four thirty-seven PM coming from the field and it was unoccupied. My television and headphones still continue to be messed with. At the last West County Board of Supervisors meeting, I talked about my forty-seven percent increase in my personal property taxes. Kathy of the West County Commissioner of Revenue always stated to me that the West County Board of Supervisors could have done better setting their rates. Kathy also stated that West County only receives a twenty-seven point three seven percent state car tax refund, thus being eleven point six three percent less than what Smith County receives. I decided to look into this matter further and contacted Jeff Campbell, our legislative representative. However, Jeff was busy with a client and his legislative system. Jeff Arnold talked to me. At first, Jeff Arnold tried to stir me and settle other directions, but finally I informed him that all I needed was the answer to why the state car tax relief was three nine percent and Smith and twenty-seven point three seven in West. Jeff, he informed me that it would take some research on his part to find that out and for me to give him two weeks to mail me a letter with an explanation. I told Jeff that all I needed was a copy of the law signed by then Governor Gilmore. At the time of this speech, I haven't heard anything from Jeff Arnold, and it has been two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Tommy Segal.
Thank you all. I'm here at reference to the problem with the sewage at Nathan King Trailer Park. Most of you, I think, are aware, sewage is running on the ground, it's running down the road, it is affecting our wells, I mean, it's draining toward our wells. You can smell it, it's a health hazard. And it's also a threat to your county water system because it's running across your crossing exits, to your meters. So if you'd have a leak, you'll be contaminated. And I'm aware that they met with Mr. Tuck from the Health Department, and he was told he needs to pump his tanks and make repairs. And from what I understand, he doesn't have the funds to do that. So I got texts from Mr. Tuck this afternoon, and he said if he doesn't make the repairs, he could be charged, prosecuted, he could be fined, put in jail, or whatever the judge decides. But that's not fixing the problem. We need something done immediately. And the history of him is, this has been going on since two thousand eighteen. He was charged, tried, convicted for discharging sewage, paid the repair. His fine was like five hundred dollars plus two hundred and eleven dollars court cost, which remains unpaid. His property taxes are delinquent, and he's also delinquent on his non-user fee for county water. So I don't know what else could be done other than if he prepares not made, you can dem the place or put it up for auction. Thank you.
Thank you for... Next up is, what's safe for mid kids?
Good evening. I live at fifteen twenty-two Gleaves Road, and I know you're all going to do a resolution for the bridge replacement tonight, so I ask you all to vote in favor of that. The bridge being out has caused a hardship for many people that live on the road and working people who travel from Cedar Springs to Speedway going to work down the Fort Chiswell or Pulaski Hills, they come through there as a shortcut instead of going through with it. So it's an inconvenience, it's an inconvenience to the school system. The school bus has to go in two different ways and increases the ride time to and from school for the kids. And that bridge is an historic bridge. I know, I looked at VDOT's website and they said the bridge replacement is from two thousand twenty-seven to two thousand thirty-one. That's too long. But that bridge is an historic bridge, is built by the Phoenix Bridge Company, the Phoenix Bill, Pennsylvania. It's a rare Phoenix column Pratt Trust Bridge. It is pin connected. Norfolk and Western Railroad installed that on, over Reed Island Creek in Carroll County in eighteen eighty-six. And when they upgraded the heavier rail and bridges in nineteen oh two, nineteen oh three, they moved it there towards that now. So that bridge is about a hundred and forty years old. But it's pin connected, they can take it apart, they could put new steel beams on the bottom of it and pin it back together. So it's made to do that. So I ask you all to vote in favor of having VDOT to repair the bridge quicker than a replacement in two thousand twenty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And the next person we have is Ms. Linda Meyer. Ms. Meyer?
Good evening. I'm also here concerned about the Gleaves Road Bridge. That is a, it's an artery for a lot of people in West County and especially down in that area. It's heavily used by the locals and also as an entryway to our national forests and the activities, recreational activities in the area. We certainly support the resolution to upgrade, make it safe, but we need it done way before two thousand twenty-seven. And everybody's concerned about this. The increase in mileage, the increase in gasoline costs, in addition to the inconvenience, is, it's not good for anybody. So we're asking you, and we're happy that you have the resolution, and we need you to push through our local VDOT, through our delegates ever, to get this taken care of in as expediently as possible, certainly before two thousand twenty-seven. And also, if we could get VDOT to designate the alternate routes with signage going east and going west, so people aren't driving around the countryside that perhaps aren't familiar with our roads. We need that taken care of as soon as possible. So, and we'd like you to also update the residents on a monthly basis to let us know what is happening with the bridge. Thank you so much.
That's all we have signed up for citizen's time. So I'll close citizen's time. Before we move on, Mr. Barry, since we do have several people signed up, I'll use some of my citizen's time, or my board time, because I don't know how long they want to stay here. On the, Mr. Coe's concerns with the water bill, is that something we can look at? I mean, I think he's got a good point on, you know, there's a lot of single families, elderly people by themselves. Is that something we can go back and look at on giving a certain amount with that base fee?
We can. Obviously, the first thing is under our, we have lower rates established for certain people meet qualifications. We can look at that to see if there needs to be some revisions to that, and then we can discuss the rate structure. It would be, you know, it would be probably changing the entire structure, but we could talk about it and see what options.
Well, I mean, from my point of view, it was stagnant for years until we inherited it. And we tried to make some changes, and maybe we didn't get it right. Instead of leaving it stagnant for years, I don't think it would hurt to look at it again.
Yeah, I don't think it would hurt at all to look at it again. And I know Mr. Coe's probably not the only one. Of course, he's here tonight, but I know he's probably not the only one who's interested in that.
Well, and, you know, he just says, you know, when I talked to him earlier in the week, you know, he's taken it faithfully for twelve years and got a little bit of use out of it, big complaints, and then we hear from somebody else that tells us about somebody that's linked with years and never paid back. So, you know, I know it's, you know, it's a fine line between, you know, those two situations, but, you know, I think we ought to take care of the citizens who actually do like that. And then going back to the next one, I know you sent an update on the sewage issue. I don't know if you shared that with Mr. Segal about whether that...
I did not, but I can send an email, I just mentioned to him earlier, that I got that this morning and shared that with you all in the updates from Mr. Holliday, and we're obviously keen to stay and talk that from our side.
Well, and, you know, if he's not been a good neighbor, this has gone on since twenty eighteen, let's go ahead and talk to Mr. Williams and Water Department about just taking him back to court.
The Water Department, and I'll check on Mr. Segal, he is not connected to the water there. So he's not on public land.
But, I mean, he pays the connection.
I'll check, I'm sure he's probably out.
My opinion is he's not one of, I mean, I don't think there's anybody in his family that's going to live in that.
That's what I talked to Mr. Holliday about and talked to another resident today about and, you know. Make certain that they're taking all the steps they can take to remedy this as quick as possible. I didn't remember the year, but I knew it had happened previously before, it's been an ongoing problem issue.
Well, if I can interject, the email you sent said he has ten days to hire somebody to fix the problem. And if he hasn't done it since two thousand eighteen, I mean, what's to make us think he's going to do it in ten days? So, I mean, the problem is still going to be there. So we need to figure out something to kind of get rid of this problem.
And just for clarification, just so people listen, that letter didn't come from us. There's nobody in the county that's overseeing this. This is the West County Health Department, which is a state organization.
And if I'm not mistaken, he included in that letter that he'd left a package of information that there's financial assistance through the state to correct this problem. So, and I sit up here all the time and half jokes, I'm complaining about the school judgment, but it is what it is. But in certain situations, we need to, and this is definitely what it is. And then, you know, the bridge resolution, I did get a couple of emails. I don't know if y'all got it, or my standpoint of years ago, before that resolution. I think we need to do some containment. How long did they do? I remember when you said pretty big days. How long goes that to you when they were talking about going back there? And they done that for pretty days.
A long time ago.
I mean, that's, but, I mean, we'll send a copy of that to the delegates and senators that wish to give the office of, I don't know, they're good. They're going to talk about that for years, definitely.
Oh, back to the trailer park concern. Would you like to see if Mr. Holliday or somebody in the environment, if you have any more, maybe you can give an update on this?
Well, that's, yeah, absolutely, but I hope he comes and tells us that he's at least been charged. I'm kind of going to poke that, you know, I might not be a real lead. You said you were using your supervisor's time right now, so we want to have security at the end. Happy Veterans Day Friday, that was the only thing else I had on my list. But I was going to say that to you, and you ruined it. All right, we'll move on to our public hearing. The West County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November the ninth, twenty twenty-two, at six oh five PM to hear public comments of potential police of West County Apex Center identified as tax parcel forty-three dash twenty-six M located on Chapman Road and Redy Mix Road. Hearing will take place in the boardroom of the West County Administration Building and three forty South Sixth Street, Woodfield, Virginia. So I'll open the public comment for the public here, and we have one person signed up, Mr. Scott, and I'm not going to butcher your name, and I know how to say it, but...
Yeah, it's been a few years.
I remember you in school, and I could say it then.
Yeah, yeah, it's Paquitas.
Paquitas.
Yes, sir. I have some prepared remarks. Just like to open, I, my anxiety's a little up because I got out of work later than I thought, had to run home, take a shower. Also, sorry, my hair's a mess. So, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and all the other members, my name's Scott Paquitas. My residence is two eighty-two Kaway Road. I'm actually in a one-mile radius of where the Apex Center is at. I live on the Kaway Campground. I've been there for about ten years. I know the intersection of exit seventy-seven very, very well. That's why I came here tonight to talk about the Apex Center. So, thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I saw mixed signs of support and backlash on social media for the idea of a hockey stadium at the Apex Center. As a former employee of the Carolina Thunderbird Stadium in Winston-Salem, I felt a semblance of responsibility to come to this meeting tonight and show my support for the hockey stadium that may be built in the Apex Center. In my opinion, this is a great opportunity for West County and all its citizens. Although I do have a recommendation that will come at the end of my speaking. Last year, in the month of October, I was presented with a job opportunity to be a half-time announcer at the Thunderbird Stadium in Winston-Salem. I took the opportunity, which meant that I would have to drive to Winston-Salem every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights. Unfortunately, the position was temporary, as I could not be an announcer full-time as they needed for other events that took place at the arena, so I was only able to work a few games. But for the time that I was there, I met the owner and his wife of the team and worked side by side with the assistant director of the stadium. I've known the assistant director for a couple of years because her and her family come to my employment at the Woodville Kaway for personal vacation. What I learned working there was that this was a hectic environment to work in, like the campground, but a lot of fun to work in. It's non-stop action which made the shift go by fast and a lot of experiences, new experiences for me. There are a lot of job opportunities with the stadium, so many in fact, I don't know what everyone did, and I could not possibly name what all the positions were. Two points that were brought up in a lot on social media was, one, this will take away money and attention from extracurricular activities at high schools in the area, because it will be held on Friday nights. And two is that West County is wasting money again on the Apex Center. One, will the hockey stadium have some effect on extracurricular activities at the high school? Probably. But the high school will probably also have effects on the stadium, again, Friday nights. If we all know something, everybody pretty much in West County goes to George Wood Roll Retreat, Fort Chiswell. There's a lot of people at those events, right? Probably, who knows, but here's a little known fact about this. Hockey is not just for this county. It is for Bland County, it is for Carroll County, almost said Caroline, excuse me. It's for different counties around us and traveling people. I just also really would like to press the fact that if people are still worried about high schools not getting the attention that they needed, they must not be paying attention to the high schools. For example, at George Wood High School last year and previous years, people, citizens of Woodville and other parts of West County come and support the high school football team over and over and over again. Different examples, as working on the field, as maintenance crew, donating money, and band moms in the concession stand is just one example. The extracurricular activities at the high school will survive, so please do not use that as an excuse to not go ahead with the Apex decision. Point number two, West County is wasting too much money. I mean, let's be honest, this is government. That's, that's all we do. That's all government does is waste money. I mean, should every government be audited? Yes. Yes, they should be. And I know that's a crazy term around. That's not what I'm calling for right now. I'm just saying, as an example, yes. It truly is an argument for another day, but what's in the past is in the past. So this building had been built in the first place. I'm not going to come up here and talk about that, because that's a, that's in the past, as I said. But if we let the building sit empty and deteriorate without improvements, it's just going to fall apart and run into the ground. We must do something with this building, and if somebody's willing to come in, throw a few jobs into the economy, I say go for it. More transparency is necessary, though. I was a student at George Wood High School during the renovations. There was no transparency with the students. We had no idea what was going on the whole time. Personally, I would like to know who is going to make all these major improvements to the Apex Center, and weekly updates should be given about the project, unlike what happened at George Wood High School. Now is the time for my recommendation. Exit seventy-seven on eighty-one is very dangerous. I would know, I live less than a mile from it. Most people that drive through it are not from the area and do not understand the flashing lights and the way the intersection works, which causes confusion and frustration from locals and out-of-towners. I know a study has been done and conducted by VDOT on how to change the intersection. I'm not sure if the final decision has been made. I could not find any information about that. I looked online for a few hours, actually this morning. I looked at the J ramps that were proposed for the exit ramps on the service road, so it would make the exit and entrance ramps a lot longer, and they would make a sharp J turn onto the service road. But looking at the West County GIS, thank you for that service, I think that it would make more sense in a long-term decision to take the service roads and put them behind the Apex Center and gas stations. On the Burger King side of the interstate, there are four owners of the property that you would have to build a road through. One of the property owners is West County, so that would be kind of easy, easier, excuse me.
Your time's up.
Oh dang it! I knew I was taking too long.
You need to, yeah, it's actually, it was actually, I was listening, something, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
I will tell you, if you have any ideas, reach out to VDOT. As you can tell, it's sometimes it's a struggle.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's the only person we have signed up for citizen's time on the public hearing. Mr. Barry, is there anything else on the public hearing?
Not at this time, sir.
Next item on our agenda is payment of invoices. Each board member received in their package a copy of the invoices as presented. I'll entertain a motion to re-trade the invoices. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by, is that Mr. Cook?
Yep.
Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approv, approve those.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any correction, corrections, additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business, Mr. Barry, do we have anything under old business?
Mr. Hankins. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, in front of you, you see a memo outlining the, uh, requested, uh, budgetary changes uh, to do the public service upgrades that we talked about last month. The total cost remains the same. It does reduce the product, the, uh, infrastructure cost, uh, from a million seventeen thousand down to nine hundred and forty-three thousand. The increase is in the state contract purchase of the radio equipment to use the U H F equipment. I have used some of the, uh, the funding that's, that's in that line item now, but there's a resolution on that second page that, uh, details, um, the, the change to the amendment, or the, the amendment to the budget and, uh, the appropriation from reserves. The bottom line is, we're asking for you to move three hundred ninety-five thousand from reserves uh, to cover the remaining, uh, equipment costs. Be glad to answer any questions that may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
Mr. Hankins, I know, um, does this get all the needs? Do we have all the needs from the fire department? I know that was one of the questions that was asked.
Yes, sir. Uh, it, it also includes a few spares, uh, both for radios and pagers, uh, because we'll, we'll have members come and go, uh, so we need to have enough equipment, and then we've, we've learned that lesson from purchasing the bunker gear. You know, we really should have bought a few spares and, and didn't, so we're having to wait pretty long times for new members to get gear. We don't wanna do that with the radio equipment, especially when you're talking, you know, six months or more uh, in, in terms of lead time, so, um, there's enough spares, I believe, to outfit, um, eight new vehicles, um, or ten pagers or ten radios. We do have some spares in there. Uh, the only thing it doesn't address is, um, uh, tower four speed, and, uh, we're working through that now, so we'll, we'll let you know if it requires further changes later on.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else have any more questions? Not I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any more discussion? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under old business? Moving on to new business, we have the Max Meadows Collection System Improvement Project.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, Mr. Crisp is not here with us, and I do not think he would mind me telling you all this at all, but, uh, Mr. Crisp became a grandfather today, so, uh, he's not here with us to go over this. But, uh, this is good news. As you all know, we have been working on the sanitary sewer project for, uh, Max Meadows area for the infiltration system. Uh, this is the official letter from the V R A notifying us of a total funding package of one million two hundred and nine thousand dollars. Um, it's three hundred and two thousand dollars for a principal repayment line and a forgiveness loan of nine hundred and six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And on the principal repayment loan, the interest rate on that is zero percent. The staff recommends your, uh, authorizing staff to sign this letter accepting this proposal from V R A for the, uh, Max Meadows system repairs.
Right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the D R A funding. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Horni, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The next item, I am, uh, gonna ask you to not take action on it. Uh, we have, uh, placed the bid on the project out. Main Street Builders is a apparent low bid, but we do have a few budgetary items to go through with them before we award this, so no action needed from this time. This will be on your agenda for the next meeting with some possible revisions to it.
Next, we have the S T X Corporation Lot Twenty-four Rail Change Order.
Yes, sir. Recommendation here to approve this change order in amount of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, this is to add the necessary and required stormwater management, uh, ponds. Uh, if you all may remember, we bid this out, and it was still under design for stormwater management. Um, this is, uh, it's D E Q met on site with us when we had the kickoff to the, uh, contract. These need to be put in place, have been reviewed by engineers and staff, and prices are reasonable. Recommend approval of the change order in amount of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Right, entertain a motion to approve, to approve Lot Twenty-four Rail Change Order Number Two. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions or discussion on that change order? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Then we have the Stafford Street Revenue Sharing Project Funding Cancellation.
Uh, Stafford Street was one of the roads that was previously approved for revenue sharing. If you all recall, Mr. Crowgey came and requested to construct that road himself and not use the revenue sharing funds because it was going to be several years out. This is just the request from VDOT for us to approve a resolution indicating that we will not be using those funds, and obviously will not be as they have already constructed that revenue. The staff recommends you all approve this rev, resolution of deallocating the, uh, approved funds for, um, Stafford Street.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any question or discussion on that? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. And here's one we can stick in the same envelope. We have the Gleaves Road Bridge Resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
I had a funny feeling that was gonna come from the gentleman from Speedo. Do I have a second?
That's part of the, that's part of the reason I was late to the thing the other day is I went that way. I was like, I can't go this way.
I have a motion by Mr. Horni, a second by Mr. Smith. I'm just proud to meet and get lost this way.
You'd be both.
And a little roll call vote to approve as presented, we'll start with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 I oppose. I know I didn't make it.
For the bridge?
I would like it repaired. I don't want, I see you there.
Unfortunately, well, unfortunately, we don't have no control over that. We're just trying to spur it along.
Just trying to hurry it up as fast as possible.
I, I agree with, with what Mr. Midkiff said. It's a great bridge. I wish they'd have took care of it over the years and done something, but at this point, and I, and I, and Mr. Barry, I don't know how many people you've shared that with is when we, uh, discussed with VDOT, you know, one of the options they talked about, and, you know, just like the gentleman talked about exit seventy-seven earlier, they always have options, but one of the things they were looking at is saving the, the trust bridge, the pedestrian, the horseback, stuff like that, doing what they do. Who knows what they're going to do? I hope it can be saved, because I think it's, I mean, I think it's a great bridge, but at this point, when you're dealing with VDOT, you can throw handful of ideas.
They want to rid of it for you.
Well.
Yeah, that's the reason they did it for repairs. I've been following it for fifteen years for repairs. I'm going to do it.
Hey, you, I don't know if you're here, but we were talking about Crystal Creek Day earlier, and that's, that might have been before your time, but they were talking about fixing it, and I was in high school.
I'm, I'm the one that put on the lights on it for the Christmas, and everybody drove over and everything goes.
All right, well, we got it approved, and we'll try to keep everybody updated. Any information we get, we'll try to put it out there and, and, uh, and I forgot this earlier with Ms. Mayor, they do think some better signage.
Mr. Barry, I would like to think that next month you all give another resolution concerning this to have VDOT add this to the National Mechanical Engineering Network.
That'd be a good discussion, have with your board member there. Get on them.
Write it up.
And, and I shared the email with you all, and just so, and I think most everyone is, is familiar with it, but the last email we got from them is that they are looking to see if they can do any type of repairs to get it back operational as soon as possible. Um, and then the option of, if they have to replace it, trying to replace it, adjoining it so they can keep the bridge in operation while the, the new bridge is being constructed, and then ultimately look at that. But obviously, if it can be repaired and get back in service, uh, and, and limit any heavy loads going over there in that process, I think it'd be good.
I mean, it's, like I said, that's what I'd like to do, but VDOT does allow to re, reach out and ask about it. All right, we'll move on to board reports. We have Budget Committee, Mr. Smith.
Budget Committee met on November second, two thousand twenty-two and recommends the following. Transferring five hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cent from the ARPA two thousand twenty-one account, seven hundred dash two six zero six zero three, to the general fund account, one hundred dash one oh one zero zero zero.
Right, come from committee doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Transfer a total of fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cent, source line items below, uh, to the County Administration Telecommunications Budget Account, twelve zero two dash four five three zero two one, and ninety-seven hundred dollars from the Board of Supervisors Unclassified Budget Account Number eleven oh one dash four six one four twenty to the County Administration's County, uh, Telecommunications Budget, one two zero two dash four three zero two one.
Right, come from committee doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Transferring the funds from the B O S rev, the Board of Supervisors Revenue Interim financing key financing account, seven hundred dash two six zero six three one to the Water Facilities Projects Fund, Account Number five ten dash two sixty six thirty-two, and the Sewer Facility Project Fund, Account five sixty dash two sixty six thirty-three, effective June the thirtieth. Thirty twenty-two, is that correct? Just wanted to make sure. It, it'd be at the amount of fi, of five point nine six three four three seven nine five, and then it's broke down below, you can see.
All right, come from committee doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approving an increase in the capitalization threshold from five thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars, and to approve the rev, revised capital asset policy effective for leases assets July one, two thousand twenty-one, and all other assets effective July first, two thousand twenty-two.
And come from committee doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on that one? And that was, that was the one that come from the auditor's.
Yes, Williams and I met with the auditors, and basically, right now, we enter into our fixed asset reports. Anything greater than five thousand dollars, their recommendation was to increase that to twenty thousand dollars. And as you all remember, Mr. Stone, when he was here last year giving our audit, he talked about how the new standard meeting for leases and everything else, that there's copier leases and all these other things that, that fall slightly above that five thousand, and he's like, there's no need to capitalize all of those, and by raising this threshold, we will not have to pay them a lot of money to do the breakdown of their capital virtualized assets. So it is recommended that we increase this to twenty thousand, and that is why the, uh, leased assets policy be effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
Does anybody else have any questions on that one? All right, hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amending and appropriating five hundred dollars to the Lead Mines Rescue Squad Water and Sewer Service Account three two zero three one dash four four one zero one zero.
All right, is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Accepting, accepting National Pool's bid to resurface the Royal Tree Lake Pool at the cost of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and to amend and appropriate a hundred and nineteen thousand to cover the difference in the, the original budget and amount, and to add the pool heater.
All right, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Yeah, why are we, why are we adding the heater to it?
Because it's freezing.
So that's the number one complaint, yeah, because it's cold on it.
And the cost of the heater?
Just, just under twenty thousand dollars.
How much?
Just under twenty thousand dollars.
Is there any more questions or discussion on that one? All right, hearing them will do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anything else? Uh, was that the only committee report we had?
Yes, it.
All right, move on to Board of Supervisors time, Mr. Cook. The only thing I'd like to talk about a little more is that Cox Trailer Park thing. And, you know, if, if something isn't done in the next few days, is there any way that we can condemn and shut down that trailer park so that there at least isn't any more going into the system?
We'll work with the Health Department. I'll work with the County Attorney. The problems we run into there, it is housing, and the ones that are in there, and there are timeframes and stipulations that you have to go through in that. It is a terrible health hazard and needs to be remedied as quickly as possible, and that's what I've referenced to Mr. Holliday, that the, the process has to be done as quickly as possible.
Well, you know, several years ago, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Several years ago, there was a, it wasn't a health hazard, it was a annoyance hazard. A gentleman had a siree over in Iowa. We got a circuit court judge involved to put a stop to it. Is that an option in this case?
We can certainly look into every option we've got, see what's there.
I mean, as annoying as it is, I'd rather deal with the siree and the raw sewage, whatever. I, I just don't think this is something that can move at the speed of government, as, as our chairman often says. You know, I mean, it's, it's definitely affecting a bunch of people, and it's just nasty.
The, the, the challenge is, the, the, the Health Department, it, it, it's not any of, our department's overseeing it, so that's the biggest challenge. It is the Health Department that has to go through their regulations and all that. We can try to see anything that we can pile on top of it. If there's any, uh, condemnation action that we can take jointly with the Health Department or with their backing to do so, to try to, to shut it down, you know, in a faster process.
Well, and, and as far as get, trying to get the money, you know, from these different, if you gave them a list of different places, then maybe he needs to be prodded in going to those places. You know, just because you tell me I can go here, I might not get the application filled out in time. I mean, we need to try to stay on top of this, I mean, on a, in my opinion, almost on a daily basis, because people are dealing with that sewer on a daily basis. I can't imagine having to walk across the raw sewage, go to my mailbox, I just can't do it. Well, I mean, going back to the. Well, I mean, going back to the possible contamination with the county water.
Yeah.
There's multiple reasons that we need to do what we can.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Burnett?
I have two items. One, I still get quite a bit of conversation about the recycling centers and non-residents and how we might be able to try and address that short term, long term. And then the last, next item is the Gent Lane meeting, I mean, that we're supposed to have and how that was coming along.
Our new planner is working on finding location so we can get that scheduled.
And that's all I have.
So, Mr. Lawson?
I do have one item and I need Mr. Hankins helping with this one. I believe we need to cut a check to Lead Mines Rescue for the For For Life Funds.
Yes, ma'am. So, Elizabeth Delp, our PIO and grant coordinator, has been working with the state. The state's had quite a bit of changeover and so we're, we're in the odd position. We've actually received the two thousand twenty-two funds before we received the twenty twenty-one funds. All of the twenty twenty-one funds say that they're pending. All told, it's nearly sixty thousand dollars in funding. And the policy that you, you all set last year was that those For For Life Funds would now be split between the two rescue squads. If you'd like, you can move tonight that we amend an appropriate budget in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents to be split equally between Lead Mines and Royal Tree Rescue Squads to fund their equipment, training and operational costs.
Does that include what's already budgeted for the For For Life Funds?
I didn't have a chance to look at, to see what was in the budget already. We had twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents coming from twenty twenty-one. I don't think we'd anticipated the twenty twenty-two funds, so I believe this is in addition to what we already have budgeted.
And we can come back to it. The urgency, from my point of view, is that they, Lead Mines uses this funding for the EMS training that's in Norfolk right now this week. So, they've used their, they pull funding from everywhere they can to send their staff there to the training and this is to reimburse them. And I didn't feel like it could wait until our Fire and Rescue Committee meeting. But if it has to, it's fine.
Yes, they, they copied, copied me and Jimmy on the email to Fire and Rescue.
I can forward that to you.
Well, the, you could, you could take the action recommended. It would just want to, it's going to put more money in their account that's needed because we'll just obviously be paying them whatever the amount is that, that's coming in, so. And the other option would be to, uh, soon.
They have some education funds in their budget, not enough to cover the cost of these.
I just go ahead and amend the perp rate as well.
I'd like to make that motion then.
Second.
All right, have a motion, but Ms. Lawson, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Ms. Lawson?
That's all I had, but thank you, Mr. Hankins. I didn't mean to put you on the spot right before our meeting. I appreciate you.
Mr. Smith?
Just to let everybody know that Mr. Barry and Dr. Poole and myself will be meeting with VDOT tomorrow at eleven o'clock to discuss the crosswalk and speeds on fifty-two and ninety-four at the Port Chisholm High School. So, if you want to join us there, more to marry and tour on that one. Mr. Burnett's already talked about Gent Lane. The only other thing I had, I know I mentioned it last week or last meeting, about the security systems for this area here, for the campus here. Do we have an update on that?
I have discussed with Mr. Bowers and was working on a timeframe for bidding out. We're going to do it probably in two separate sections. The courthouse complex will be the first section and not, because they're all not going to be on the same servers. I do not have a timeframe with when that bid will go out, but he has it on his list. He said it is one of the items we're bidding out and he has a plan where we're putting the base system. He had all that lined up. He just does not let the bid out yet.
Yep. If you can keep us updated on that, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Mr. Hornet?
I have a few things. First would be the resolution that David mentioned. Can we have that at our next board meeting? If that's a resolution that we need to send to VDOT or is there some way that we can do something to get that bridge on some kind of a register?
I would ask if, if Mr. Midkiff can email us some information about that register and, and information about the bridge and its historical knowledge of it that we can take and, and implement that into a resolution.
Second thing is I want to thank all the board members for approving the resolution. And the third thing was the, have we approved or have we done anything about paving or sealing fire department parking lots?
Yes, bids are due in, I'll get it, but it's, it is out the bid on the paving and the sealing.
Does this include the speedle, fire department?
Off the head, I don't think so. I do not think it includes sealing that.
They were, they were saying that it needs to be sealed. Make sure that if, if we're going to do the others, we need to do that one too if it needs to, or send somebody out to look and see or whatever. I believe that was all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hornet. Mr. Terry?
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, was I had an incident personally myself at Route Fifty-two toward Evanchem. It was like when the trash, the employee there was extremely rude, very adamant. And all it was, when we threw some trash into the rooftop dumpsters, there was a piece of the red tie handle, the tie of bags hanging out of the bottom. And the dude come and, and he said that wasn't his job. I thought we left something on the ground. I thought something was, I'm like, sir, there was nothing on the ground. I'm not sure what you're talking about. He's like, I can't shut the door and I'm not paid to clean your mess. And that just, that, that did not sit very well, I would say, with leaks.
Can you, can you email me the date and time you were there and if you know the employee's name and we will get that to the contractor and they certainly understand?
Yes, because if he does it to me, he's done, he's done it to everybody else. And the only thing I had was what the chairman was going to say, Happy Veterans Day to the men and women who served on Friday. Thank you all so much. And that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. I'll echo that. I was going to tell Sergeant Cook Happy Veterans Day. Anybody in the office, and that's all I can, anybody in the audience, that's all I say because he, he kept track of when I was talking earlier.
Someone's got to keep track.
Somebody's got to keep you in check.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I will point out that one of the national programs that the National Association of Counties
and some other partner agencies have done is, is this year, there's a Go Green for Veterans program. And so, you'll notice as, as you leave tonight, the lights outside of this building have been changed to green for the week in recognition of veterans and their service.
I saw that, but it's nice.
I thought Mr. Barry read some more of the green light was cheaper than the sound. All right, next item on the agenda is a closed meeting for two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, Discussion of Personnel Matters, Department Heads, two point two thirty-seven eleven A three, Acquisition and Disposition, Disposition of Real Property with Apex Leaks, two point two thirty-seven eleven A five, Perspective Business and Industry Solar, and two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight, Consultation with Legal Counsel, Dealing with Solar. All entertain a motion to go in a closed session. So. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Have a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We're now back in open session. On the record, Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Yes, sir. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of, of Information Act. Whereas Section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now, therefore, be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in this closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion, please, sir.
All right, I have a motion to ratify the certification by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize.
Chair.
The.
The chairman is on the Apex lease?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one?
Yes, what is the motion? I didn't hear it.
To authorize the chairman is on the Apex lease.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Anything else? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Then I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to advertise the staff engineer position.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else come forward to board? Mr. Barry?
I do not have anything else, no.
Mr. Bowden, you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Barry.
Mr. Hankins? Ms. Collins? All right, does anybody else have anything? No, we'll adjourn.